Call this meeting to order. Please stand, salute our flag, and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
This meeting is in compliance with the open public meeting law and has been duly advertised in the newspapers as an official meeting. Roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Present.
Mrs. Cass?
Present.
Dr. Osman?
Here.
Mr. Palmeri?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Superintendent's report. I'm turning the meeting over to Mrs. Primelli for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin tonight by just, oops, sorry, reminding our Board of Education and our public of just all of our summer programs. We have been very busy. Our staff has been busy, our administrators have been busy, and our teachers and our supervisors that are overseeing summer programs. Just this month, we have our extended school year program for our special education students is up and running. We have our jumpstart program at our middle school students who are being housed over at McAuliffe right now. That's running currently. And we have our credit recovery programs running in our high schools. We have STEM camp, we have a musical theater camp, we have a film camp, and much more. So as you can see, very busy here this summer with students, supporting them and enriching them. Also, this month, we are busy with our administrators. In fact, this week, our entire administrative team has been gathering over at Liberty every day. We've been doing training, planning, goal setting, articulation. It's been a busy week. We've also been interviewing tremendously for any open positions so that we are fully staffed for the fall. So it's definitely a busy time of the school year, even though our students aren't here. So tonight, we have two presentations this evening. One of them is our second reporting period for our district of violence vandalism and hip report. So tonight, we have Mr. Maluski, the director of security, here with us to give us that second report for the school year. Mr. Maluski?
Thank you, Mrs. Primelli, and good evening, Mr. Walsh and all of our board members here this evening. The first report I'd like to present is our violence and vandalism report for Report Period Two, which is January to June of 2022. Just some background and overview as a reminder. The objective of the violence and vandalism report is to collect and report incident data concerning serious student misconduct in the areas of violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, weapons, and substance abuse. On the slide up on the screen, we put together some data through information. First off, from our last pre-COVID year, as you can see from January to June of 2019. This is a comparison, a comparison to our current numbers for Report Period Two of this year, which is the column to the left. In the center column are our numbers from our first reporting period from 2021, September to December. And all the way to the right is our current numbers for Report Period Two, January, June of 2022. For Report Period Two of this year, we had a total of 27 incidents of violence, vandalism. There were six incidents. A total of 64 harassment, intimidation, and bullying investigations. These are alleged and confirmed. Weapons, there were zero incidents. And substance abuse cases, there were a total of 32 for Report Period Two of this year.
Call this meeting to order. Please stand, salute our flag, and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
This meeting is in compliance with the open public meeting law and has been duly advertised in the newspapers as an official meeting. Roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Present.
Mrs. Cass?
Present.
Dr. Osman?
Here.
Mr. Palmeri?
Present.
Mr. Sargent?
Present.
Mrs. Rivera?
Present.
And Mr. Walsh?
Present.
I need a motion for approval of the agenda with addendums.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing no discussion, roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osman?
Yes.
Mr. Palmeri?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent? Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Superintendent's report. I'm turning the meeting over to Mrs. Primelli for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin tonight by just, oops, sorry, reminding our Board of Education and our public of just all of our summer programs. We have been very busy. Our staff has been busy, our administrators have been busy, and our teachers and our supervisors that are overseeing summer programs. Just this month, we have our extended school year program for our special education students is up and running. We have our Jump Start Program at our middle school students who are being housed over at McAuliffe right now. That's running currently. And we have our credit recovery programs running in our high schools. We have STEM Camp, we have a musical theater camp, we have a film camp, and much more. So as you can see, very busy here this summer with students, supporting them and enriching them. Also, this month, we are busy with our administrators. In fact, this week, our entire administrative team has been gathering over at Liberty every day. We've been doing training, planning, goal setting, articulation. It's been a busy week. We've also been interviewing tremendously for any open positions so that we are fully staffed for the fall. So it's definitely a busy time of the school year, even though our students aren't here. So tonight, we have two presentations this evening. One of them is our second reporting period for our District Violence, Vandalism, and HIB report. So tonight, we have Mr. Maluski, the Director of Security, here with us to give us that second report for the school year. Mr. Maluski?
Thank you, Mrs. Primelli, and good evening, Mr. Walsh and all of our board members here this evening. The first report I'd like to present is our Violence and Vandalism Report for Report Period Two, which is January to June of 2022. Just some background and overview as a reminder. The objective of the Violence and Vandalism Report is to collect and report incident data concerning serious student misconduct in the areas of violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, weapons, and substance abuse. On the slide up on the screen, we put together some data through information. First off, from our last pre-COVID year, as you can see, from January to June of 2019. This is a comparison, in comparison to our current numbers for Report Period Two of this year, which is the column to the left. In the center column are our numbers from our first reporting period from 2021, September to December. And all the way to the right is our current numbers for Report Period Two, January, June of 2022. For Report Period Two of this year, we had a total of 27 incidents of violence. Vandalism, there were six incidents. A total of 64 harassment, intimidation, and bullying investigations. These are alleged and confirmed. Weapons, there were zero incidents. And substance abuse cases, there were a total of 32 for Report Period Two of this year. The next, the next slide is a list of our elementary schools and a breakdown of our violence and vandalism incidents. Across the top of the slide, you'll see categories, fights, simple assault, threats, sexual offenses, and again, our harassment, intimidation, and bullying cases. These are both alleged and confirmed. These are the totals for Report Period Two, January to July, June of 2022. We had a, one fight at the Johnson School. A lot of zeros in regards to simple assaults, threats, and sexual offenses, and a total of 35 harassment, intimidation, and bullying cases at the elementary school level. Next slide. At our secondary schools, again, a breakdown of our fights, simple assaults, our threats, sexual offenses, and our harassment, intimidation, and bullying cases. There were a total of eight fights at the McAuliffe Middle School. Liberty High School saw three, Memorial two. At the McAuliffe School, we saw a total of eight simple assaults, one at Liberty, one at Memorial. In the category of threats, there was one incident at the Getz School, one at McAuliffe, one at Memorial. Zero reported sexual offenses at all of our secondary schools. And in the category of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, there were five incidents at the Getz School, 12 at McAuliffe, three at Liberty, and nine at Memorial. There was a total of 29 for secondary schools. Next slide. Our vandalism and substance abuse cases for Report Period Two. Again, we did a comparison to our last pre-COVID year, January to June of 2019, in comparison to our current reporting period. Down at the bottom, the total number of vandalism incidents. We had one incident for this reporting period at Memorial High School. There were five incidents at Getz, and there were zero reported incidents for all other schools. Again, this is in the area of vandalism. Up at the top right of the slide are substance cases, substance uses cases. Again, a comparison back to 2019. And for this reporting period, we had a total of 15 reported incidents of marijuana cases, zero alcohol, prescription drugs. There were zero. There was one reported case in which a substance was suspected, and the exam was refused. Moving down the slide, substance possession cases. We had a total of 13 involving marijuana. Drug paraphernalia cases, there were three, alcohol zero. And all other unauthorized prescription drugs, there were zero reported cases. Next slide. Our weapons offenses. Thankfully, there were zero reported cases for this report period. In comparison to January of 2019, we did have one report again. That was a pre-COVID year. Next slide. Actions taken by our school district in regards to these incidents. In the far right column, there were 31 incidents in which the police were notified. No complaint was filed on behalf of the police. There were zero incidents in which the police were notified and complaint was filed. In-school suspensions, there were eight. Out-of-school suspensions, there was a total of 54. Impacted students, in which student offenders were involved. The far right column, there were 53 incidents. Student victims, we had a total of four. And incidents involving staff members as victims, there were zero reported incidents. In a conclusion to this report, we'll continue to create a safe district and school environment. We will continue to bring our school and district safety teams and school anti-bullying specialists together to review this data. We'll continue to build strong partnerships with the Jackson Police Department and local law enforcement. We will continue to provide training for school administrators on the effective prevention and response to violence, vandalism, and substance usage in our school district. And we'll continue to educate all our stakeholders on how they can make Jackson schools a safer place for all. And that concludes my Violence and Vandalism Report. Be happy to take any questions.
There's a high number of reports to the police. Is that because of the SROs?
Partly, yes, yes. Whenever we have an incident involving some level of criminality or we have an incident which requires a mandatory report to the police, in many cases, in all our cases, our SROs are notified on these incidents and asked to respond to these incidents.
Thank you.
I have one question. Can you just define what is simple assault?
A simple assault, a simple assault is basically an assault which does not involve a weapon. Typically, what it is, it would be student on student, what we would typically see. It's similar to a fight. However, in a fight, a fight is mutually involved by both parties in that incident. A simple assault would be an action in which one person would be the aggressor and taking action against another person. So to clarify, a fight would be a mutual combatants involved in that incident, whereas in an assault, a simple assault, it would be one person being the aggressor towards another person.
And in a simple assault, can someone strike that individual that's not fighting back multiple times? Or is this like a one-strike type of assault?
It could be one single strike or it could be multiple strikes.
So I'm just curious with our elementary schools. When I'm looking at the alleged versus confirmed, the alleged is almost three times that of, wait a minute, am I doing that math right? Almost three times that of the confirmed number, whereas in our secondary schools, the numbers are a little closer. So I'm wondering if our elementary school parents are, is the definition of a HIB, are they understanding, is that who's alleging, you know, that a HIB is going on? Are they understanding what a HIB actually is? Because I would just think the numbers would be closer to what an actual confirmed is. So are they thinking everything is a HIB?
Correct. Oftentimes, the HIB terminology is used quite often. And we do our best and make our best efforts to educate our parents on the statutory definition of what a HIB is. There's a specific definition of what it is. To the average person who may not be familiar with the terminology or what the statutory definition is, they do freely use that term, but we do make our best efforts, our anti-bullying specialists as well as our principals, to educate our parents on what the statutory definition is, to try to, you know, have a better understanding of what is a true harassment, intimidation, bullying case and what may not be. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, the next report I'd like to present is our harassment, intimidation, bullying report for Report Period Two. On the left-hand side of the slide are our current anti-bullying specialists and their assignments at each of our 10 schools. On the right-hand side of the slide are our current events and initiatives and some of the things that we are continuing to participate in or our school HIB prevention assemblies at every school and grade level. Focusing in on explaining that when it comes to bad behavior, we do not do that here. We do continue to have classroom lessons and grade-level activities on character education. Quite a number of our schools are using bucket filling and positive programs, peer mediations, morning announcements, school spirit days, as well as character education groups as part of their training. Social, emotional, and character education is a big part of what we also do, diversity and equity. And also, district-wide suicide prevention education is critical in what we do at our district. Our climate and culture meetings and surveys to strengthen the use of the data to target our programs and approaches is also utilized. Next slide. This is a breakdown of our HIB investigations at the elementary school level. At the top of the slide, on the left-hand side, is our alleged HIB cases. Again, as a comparison, we posted our data from January and June of 2019 in comparison to our current Report Period Two for this year. For Report Period Two of this year, the Crawford Rodriguez, we had three alleged incidents reported, HIB incidents reported. At the Elm School, there were four. Holman had a total of seven. Johnson had one reported case, Rosenhour zero. And the Switlick School had 11 reported alleged HIB incidents reported to them. On the far right-hand side for confirmed HIBs for Report Period Two, Crawford Rodriguez had two confirmed HIB investigations. Elm, zero. Holman, one. Johnson, one. Rosenhour, zero. And Switlick had five confirmed cases of HIB. There's a total of nine at all of our elementary schools. Next slide. At our secondary schools, a breakdown again of our secondary schools. The alleged cases at Getz, there were a total of five for Report Period Two. McAuliffe had a total of five. Liberty, one. Memorial, seven. Confirmed cases for our right-hand column, Getz, zero. McAuliffe, seven. Liberty, two. And Memorial, two. A total of 11 confirmed cases at our secondary schools. The motivation behind our confirmed HIB cases, in 12 of those cases, appearance was the motivating factor. Race was a motivating factor in five. Religion, there was one case. Gender was one. Disability was one. And the outcomes of all of our investigated HIB incidents, some of the consequences of remedial measures that were utilized, parent-student conferences, out-of-school suspensions, suspension of privileges, in-school suspensions, detentions. Remedial measures that were utilized were counseling. Seating changes were used. Mediation and behavior plans were implemented. The location of the investigated HIB incidents, these are confirmed. HIB cases, 13 of the confirmed HIBs occurred on school grounds. Two of the cases involved cell phones. And five of the confirmed cases occurred on school buses. Some of the classifications of the actions of the investigated HIB incidents were demeaning-type actions by students, offensive text messages, name-calling, offensive comments, mocking, teasing, hitting, kicking, and pushing. Next slide. Our 2021, 2022 HIB school and district self-assessment grades as tabulated by our anti-bullying specialists and our principals. Across the top of the slide is a breakdown of our eight core elements with the maximum scores available for each of those elements. And there is a breakdown for all of our elementary schools there with their self-assessment grade in those core element categories. Crawford School, Crawford Rodriguez, came up with a score of 74 as their self-assessment grade. The maximum score, I might remind, is 78. Again, Crawford Rodriguez came in at 74. The Elm School self-assessment grade for this previous school year was 72. Holman scored a 73. Johnson scored a 53. And Switlick scored 74. And Rosenhour came in at 56. I'd just like to add that the Johnson School, as a reflection of their score, their overall score, did have a first-year anti-bullying specialist takeover this year, which did impact their score at the school. Next slide is our middle schools and high school grades. Our core elements across the top with the maximum score as possible. Maximum score total is a 78. The Getz School came in with a self-assessment grade for this year at 49. McAuliffe's score was a 54. Liberty High School came in at 71. And Memorial High School came in at 73. And just as a reminder, our middle schools, Getz and McAuliffe, also did have first-year anti-bullying specialists taking over this year, which did directly impact their score. Overall, our final score for our district did increase and did improve to a 64.9 score. Maximum score, again, is 78. And that score is up from our previous self-assessment grades from last year, 2021, in which we scored a 64.1. So there was noticeable improvement. Again, I'd just like to remind that at McAuliffe and Getz and our Johnson Schools, we did have first-year anti-bullying specialists who did make their best efforts. And I am happy to see that we did improve overall from last year's scores. Last slide. And in conclusion, we are committed to being proactive and prepared. And this is kind of a summary of our Violence and Vandalism and our HIB report in keeping our schools and our students and our staff safe. Some of the programs and some of the trainings that we did implement this past year, and we will continue to work on in keeping our schools safe, is behavioral threat assessment training for our staff. Dr. Taylor was a big part of that. Behavioral threat assessment team training, district and schools. Understanding school violence training is implemented, again, by Dr. Taylor. Additionally, our district is moving forward. We are working with the I Love You Guys Foundation on a standard response protocol. We're looking to implement this program. And we have done some training on it. This school is recognized by the New Jersey Department of Education, Office of School Preparedness and Emergency Planning. It is suggested and recommended by that office. This program came about, unfortunately, and it was founded by family members who have lost students, unfortunately, in school shootings across our country. Members of our administration and our staff did go through training with the I Love You Guys in January of this year. John Michael Keys was our instructor. John Michael Keys is one of the founding members of I Love You Guys and unfortunately, he lost his daughter in a school shooting in Idaho back in the mid-2000s. Additionally, we are moving forward with I Love You Guys Foundation Standard Reunification Method training, and we're looking to implement that method in the event of a critical incident at one of our schools. Again, this is a recognized program by the New Jersey Department of Education, the Office of School Preparedness and Emergency Planning. We also have implemented and conducted district training at all of our schools with our anti-bullying specialists on policies and procedures for addressing and reporting HIB, violence and vandalism, and substance usage. Myself and our SROs did go out this past year and provide training to our staff members at all of our schools on these various topics. And lastly, at our ABC and ABS meetings, we have conducted HIB and threat assessment training with a presentation, again, to further our training and better prepare and keep our students and our schools safe. And we will continue to push forward on our trainings and trying to educate ourselves in all of these areas. And that concludes my harassment, intimidation, and bullying report.
Any questions?
I have one. On one of the slides, it looked like McAuliffe had more confirmed HIBs than alleged for every year. How does that happen?
The way the scores are calculated is that when you combine the scores together, the alleged, I'm sorry, when you combine the incidents together, the alleged and the confirmed, that will give you the total number of incidents at that school for the year. So when we categorize these incidents, they're broken down into alleged incidents, which the incident or the investigation was determined to be unfounded. And cases that were confirmed, there was evidence that a bullying incident did take place. Those are confirmed incidents. So when you combine those two numbers, that will give you the total number of investigations at the school. Just to try to provide clarification, this is how these categories are broken down for reporting purposes with the Department of Education.
So that means there was seven that were investigated, two were alleged, and five were confirmed?
Correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you for having me and have a wonderful summer. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Maluski. As Mr. Maluski had referred to on that last slide, just this week, again, working with Mr. Beginski, Mr. Maluski, our SRO officers, we have been doing some significant training on safety. So thank you for mentioning that tonight as well. So also tonight, we have our food service director here, Mr. Imordino, who's going to provide the board and the public with an overview and review of our food service department.
Thank you, Mrs. Primelli. Good evening, everyone. Hope you're enjoying your summer so far. My name is Joe Imordino, and I am the Food Service Director for Jackson Schools. Tonight, we're going to be talking about the year, basically, a year-end review and what we plan on doing moving forward. Part of what we're going to discuss is how we got here, our financial performance and statistics, some of the challenges that we faced, some department accomplishments, and what we're going to be doing in the coming year. We're going to be talking about meal pricing for this next year and some acknowledgements as well. So how we got here. For 2021 and 22, Congress passed legislation to provide free meals for all students. That includes breakfast and lunch. all students. That includes breakfast and lunch, regardless of what their original eligibility status was. And with that, they've also provided significant funding for all the meals that we serve. This is, over the years, this is probably a dollar to $1.25 more per meal in each category, which is very significant to our financial success this year. During this year, we served all of our meals in individually sealed containers for safety protocols for COVID. In order to provide speed of service, we implemented a pre-order system with the elementary school administrators. This allowed for our students to have lunch in a social setting, as well as maintaining some degree of social distancing, and allowed our staff to prepare the meals to the needs of the students. At the secondary schools, the students received meals in safe containers after going through their typical serving lines, and they were still able to choose their meals as they have been accustomed to over the years. And we were still able to provide a variety of meals and selections in a grab-and-go format. Our financial performance was stellar. Our total revenue for this year was $4.84 million, which is, again, another record-setting year. Our profits, minus the indirect costs that went to the district, was $1.35 million. And if we took the indirect costs out, we would have made $1.81 million. Our food cost percentage was 24.62%, which is, the industry standard is 40. Our labor cost was 31%, paper 4.1%, and other costs, which includes everything below, the uniforms, repairs, office supplies, and so on, was at 11.87%. If we took out the indirect costs, that number would have, percentage would have gone down exponentially. These are our meal statistics for the, for each category, for high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools. As you can see, we served 117,000-plus meals for breakfast, and over 860,000 meals for lunch. Statistically, over the past couple of years, we, under normal circumstances, I would have been able to give you a line-by-line, month-by-month statistic on how we fared. However, the last three years have been crazy, as we all know. So, what I've done was, I've given you a breakdown of what we actually served in, for '21, '22, what it was like in the hybrid year, which was last year, and prior to that, for the '18, '19 school year, prior to COVID, those were the statistics that we had. As you can see, the numbers grew exponentially from pre-COVID, from pre-COVID timeline. The one thing to mark that is of great significance is the participation percentage in the middle. Again, one of the reasons for our success is not only did we have good reimbursements, but we also had, we also serving 62% of our student body. Whereas, if you notice, for '18, '19, we've been hovering around 35, 36, 37%. So, by virtue of us serving the amount of meals that we serve, and also the greater reimbursement rates given to us by the Fed, this is what led to our financial success. Some of the challenges that we faced this year, staffing was a major problem for us. We had a lot of COVID-related absences. We had, we were short-staffed. We didn't have enough subs. But we made it through the rain, as the song says. So, we made it, and the kids were fed, and I hope they were, I hope they were all happy with what we did for them. Supply chain issues were a major problem for us this year. We were having problems with paper specifically, paper products specifically, and towards the end of the year, a lot of our food items were becoming problematic for us as well. Our distribution company was having problems getting products from the manufacturers. The manufacturers were shutting down plants and facilities because they didn't have the staff and because of COVID-related issues. That became a monumental problem for us. One of the issues that we also faced was the implementation of the New Jersey Plastic Bag and Foam Ban that was effective May 22. However, we were able to receive a waiver from the Department of Environmental Protection to not be able to 100% comply with the law, or with the new law. There is, we are still waiting for a response for '22, '23, which will allow for us some flexibility of the items that we can serve. For example, like Styrofoam products, we're hoping that with this waiver, they'll be able to allow us to continue to use Styrofoam until the supply chain issues become resolved. Again, some of the challenges, significant rising food costs, fuel charges, inflation is at an all-time high. The volume of students that we served on a daily basis, we knew that we were going to serve a lot of students, but initially, we didn't realize how significant that number was. Fortunately, my staff really held it together, and we served the kids quite well, and quite quickly, as a matter of fact. Collection of negative balances is always an issue, and our declining enrollment is becoming problematic for us as well. As we move forward, we are going to do our best to manage any revised USDA, New Jersey Department of Agriculture COVID-19 guidelines, waivers as they arise, effectively manage our operational and financial challenges post-COVID-19. We're going to have annual minimum wage increases, contractual obligations, supply chain concerns is, again, is paramount for us. Our plan for meal services during the next following year, overall, we're going to continue to streamline our meal selections and snacks pursuant to supply chain issues, and continue to provide healthy meals options to all schools. As you're aware, the high schools will have a common lunch period. Our plan is to continue to provide full-service meals at both cafeterias in each location. We are also going to provide annexed serving lines. One, we have an indoor concession at Liberty High School, and we also have an area here at Fine Arts that we're going to retro into a food service area. We are also going to be providing vending machines that will provide complete reimbursable meals at the high schools. Three are going to be at Memorial, two are going to be at Liberty, and we are the first in the state to be able to do this. As you can see the pictures, just to give you an idea as to where they are in the, in each location, the indoor concession stand's already a fully functional kitchen. And at Memorial, in the Fine Arts area, again, we're going to have to retrofit some equipment and so on to make that work for us. Students will go there. There'll be point-of-sales machines there as well. Students will be able to get a variety of, excuse me, cold sandwiches, wraps, sandwiches.